Thank you again for being here. And, uh, Mr. Hill, we'll let you go right on into your part on the program tonight.
All right. Hi, I'm Taylor Hummel, and I'm representing both Stanford Children and Friends of Metro Schools. But more importantly, as I sit here tonight, I'm representing two of the 79,000 children affected by school funding. And one on the way. Um, I think it is imperative that we do not talk about school funding as just a number, but that we see that there are 79,000 real children, real students, who are really affected by school funding every day. Before I give a brief explanation of what Friends of Metro Schools is, I want to acknowledge Francie Hunt, former city director for Stanford Children. Without her passion, guidance, and oversight during the process of writing this primer, we would have never been able to do it. So, thank you very much, Francie, that she's in the audience. I would also like to recognize our parent advisory council chair, Erica Lanier, who is also in the audience. Friends of Metro Schools is a coalition made up of community members as well as community organizations. Our main goal is to make education a top priority during the state and local budget process. And we want to ensure that funding levels are adequate so that every child has access to a quality, a high-quality public education.
Thank you, Lady Chair, and members of the board. Dr. Register, we're proud to present to you a primer on how our schools are funded. This is intended to help parents, citizens, taxpayers in Nashville understand how the school budget process works. Not only how it works, but then how they can engage during that process. So, of course, I'm not going to read this to you. You each have a copy of it, as does each member of our audience. But I want to take it through really quickly and sort of orient you as to how this is laid out. So, past the cover, on the inside cover, you've got basic facts about Metro Schools. Then you could turn to the next page. You have a section explaining what are operating funds? What are they used for? How much are they? And how does that process work for determining operating funds? On the other side of that page, you'll see capital funds. And it talks about the capital funding process, which, as you know, is quite complex. I see you're going to be delving into that later tonight in the work session. The next page lays out the use of federal funds, and how they're different, how they are, have a specific purpose, and how they work. You'll see that on the opposite page, you have a chart, a flow chart, showing you how the school budget moves through the process. And as it starts with basically you all, and developing a line item budget, you present to the mayor, who then presents to the council as part of the overall city budget, and then also how the state legislature and the governor interact with that budget process as well. So, that's intended to walk folks through that in a very visual form. And then on the final page, this is the page where parents, constituents, can look and see, all right, now that I understand the process, how and when do I engage in that process? You'll see that in November and January, we encourage folks to contact the governor's office and encourage state funding for education. In March, that's typically when you all are looking at a detailed proposed budget. So, if a parent has feedback about individual items in the budget, they would contact their school board member. In April, it's about contacting the mayor's office, encouraging full funding for schools. And you'll see the last step, May and June, that's when the city council and the state legislature tends to make their decisions. And so, it's all about contacting your state legislator and your city council person. And I'll turn it over to Stephen Henry of MNEA.
Thank you, Mark. As part of one president of the Metropolitan National Education Association, I would like to thank you for your service on the school board, to the city of Nashville, and students and teachers, and education support, and employees. I would just hope that you'd speak to me on an issue that's equally important to you, and that's the importance of having fully funded schools. School finance systems seek to ensure that every school district can fund its schools with revenues adequate to student needs, that they do so in a way that is equitable to both students and the taxpayers, and that they cover high-cost programs like special education and non-instructional yet vital components like transportation. Adequate funding is meant to under, is adequate funding is understood to mean the amount of further student spending a district needs in order to provide all students with the realistic opportunity of meeting state performance standards. Simply put, necessary and not make do revenues are needed to provide a level of resources adequate to giving public schools the capacity to do what is asked of them in the 21st century's global knowledge and information economy. And I'd like to share with you the highlights of one study on how school funding inequities and child poverty affect student achievement. The study entitled "Poor School Funding, Child Poverty, and Student Achievements: Some New Findings" by researchers Kevin Payne and Bruce Biddle, and published in Educational Research, or used data provided by the National Center for Education Statistics on Funding, Poverty Rates, and Other Information for School Districts Around the Country. They then used this data to predict achievement scores on the second international mathematics study, or SIMS. The use of SIMS was important for two reasons. It provided the, a national sample that could be associated with identifiable school districts, and it provided comparable achievement data for other countries. This allowed Payne and Biddle to disaggregate the achievement data and compare U.S. student performance by poverty and funding level to the performance of students of other industrialized nations. And this is what they found. The poverty rate in the United States is far higher than in any other advanced nation, between 20% to 25%. That is approximately 45% higher than that of any other country in this study, Australia, Canada, the United Kingdom, Germany, and France. And five to eight times as great as rates in many prominent industrialized countries. The researchers explained that child poverty rates indicate that children are likely to live in substandard housing, perceive an inadequate diet, suffer from chronic dental or medical problems, be members of families headed either by a single mother or by two overburdened parents who subsist on welfare or work long hours at low-paid jobs. Payne and Biddle go on to state that what this means is that poor children have a much harder time in school than either affluent or middle-class children. And given the rate of child poverty is much higher in the United States and elsewhere, it also means that the aggregate achievement of American schools are likely to be lower than those from countries where poverty, child poverty rates are lower. Payne and Biddle further found that if the American mathematics achievement scores on the SIMS had been generated by only well-funded schools and districts with low levels of poverty, the United States would have earned an aggregate achievement score slightly better than the second-rate nation of the study, the Netherlands, only outscored by another, the other country, Japan. In contrast, their analysis also showed that had the United States been represented by low-funded schools and high-poverty districts, our aggregate achievement score would have been below those of other industrialized nations studied and nearly on par with Nigeria and Swaziland. They go on to state that as America is uniquely handicapped by tolerance for poorly-funded schools and massive child poverty, none of the present programs proposed to reform American education, including vouchers, charter schools, accountability schemes, or setting high standards, are likely to improve achievement substantially. The researchers conclude that if ignoring the problem of child poverty, we are imposing an enormous burden on Americans' public schools, asking those schools to somehow make up for the poverty of their students. MNEA's mission is a great public school for every student, and I know this is also the ambition chaired by the Coalition Partners, Friends of Metro Schools, as well as the members of this school board. And to adequately meet the diverse needs of the 71.4% of our students who are economically disadvantaged, together, we must be their advocates in ensuring that the funding exists to meet those diverse needs. Thanks.
According to the email from Bishop Hawkins, I only have time to say amen. Because I know that your time is important. But I do want to say that as President of IMF, that IMF is a part of this coalition, a part of the people who are bringing this discussion to the community, because we believe it's important. We are, we believe that in order for this city to be the kind of city that needs to be, that we have to have inadequate funding in the school system. And so, we have been working, Dr. Register, and meeting with him, and so that ultimately what we hope that we provide to this is to say would be most representative, and that you can have confidence in this system, that the funding that will be used will be used in a way. We've been telling them, it's not a lot of discretionary spending that you have in the budget that you have. But when they have heard your advocacy, that we need funding particularly to address the achievement gap between socioeconomic groups. And it hasn't happened. They want to know that we're moving in the right direction. So, through our conversation with them, through the efforts of those who are friends of public schools, we believe we're heading in the right direction. And so, we're here to be fully supportive, to do what we can to address this issue and keep the conversation at a point where the Nashville citizens can believe that the funding, they will be approved, and we give you the best.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate the panel, Chamber, IMF, MNEA, and Stanford Children. We certainly appreciate it.
Can I, um, I just want to let everyone know where they can pick up the primer, where it'll be distributed. It'll be distributed through the school clusters, our libraries, community centers, and also at the Stanford Children offices and the Chamber offices, as well as downloadable from the Stand website. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your being here.
I want to ask a question.
Yes, we have a question.
One.
We have an amen question.
And it will be distributed through the clusters. That means that a copy will be going home with the students? Is that what it means?
Yes, we are hoping to get it out to PTOs and PTSO so that we'll go home with the students and their parents can read through it.
That's very good, thank you.
And it will be on MMPS website?
Yes, it's also on the MMPS website. And for the Stand website, it's www.stand.org/foms.
It's also available on the One Nashville website, which is onenashville.org.
Great, great. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Good night, Captain Ottley.
I'll ask Chris and his staff, Joe, everyone who's a part of the presentation to come on up to the head table. We have, I'll, I'll say a word or two of introduction, and then turn it over very quickly to Chris, and Joe, and others to make a presentation today. But let me say that we, in the first place, we need to recognize great support over the last few years from Metro Council and the mayor in a tough economic time. We've had, we've had good increases in our operating budget. It's not everything that we need, but we've, we've made progress when many of our sister cities across the country have fared very poorly. And we, we need to acknowledge that. One area that's been, one area of funding that's significant and that has been stressed is our capital outlay budget. Uh, you know, we are getting ready to open a new elementary school in the fall. We have renovations that are coming online, and, and these folks can talk about that progress a little bit. But this past year, we did not get an increase in capital outlay budget. So, it's, it's piled up on us. And we now have, in our, according to our 10-year capital needs list, close to $200 million in, in capital needs. And the challenge to us is to look at those needs that you've already identified, that have been identified over the last two years and you've prioritized, and determine, and to determine what's appropriate for us to prioritize, and say, we need to do this first. It's not an easy task. And, but, but, you know, I think we need to acknowledge the fact that I don't think any of us expect, and we know that Metro Government cannot afford to fund everything that's already been approved by the board and it's already on the list. So, we have to establish some priorities. We don't have a number to give you. We, I'll let, I'll let Chris and Joe talk more about that. But this is intended to be a good discussion about what we've done, and what our most pressing needs are, and where we need to go with a realistic capital outlay priority list to take forward. Chris, I'll turn it over to you now.
Well, thank you. And I'll begin by first making sure that everyone knows Ken Murdock on the far, on my far ride down here. Ken has been with the district now over a year. Ken is the Director of Facility Planning and Construction, doing an excellent job. I know you know Chris Weber and, of course, Joe Edgens. Just a little background history, the last capital funding that was approved by the Metro Council was back in September of 2010. Since that time, this board has approved a capital budget in January of 2011, which was not funded, and then approved another capital budget last month, January 2012. And so, we're here tonight to discuss capital planning in general and capital funding relating to the first-year needs and first-year requirements more specifically. To give you just a little bit of information about the packet that you have in front of you, you have two maps, and they're both represented here on either side of me. The first map is intended to show you geographically where the facilities are located that are being requested in the 2012 capital budget, which the board approved back on January the 10th. You can see the highlighted boxes show where those facilities are located. If you were able to see this close enough, you can see whether it was a renovation or a classroom addition, or both, and what the total dollar figure is for each. Over here on my right, to your, I guess to your left, is the same map, but it also includes all of the facilities that have either been renovated or classroom additions have been put on these facilities over the last five capital funding cycles, which go back to the year 2005, because we didn't receive capital funding two years. And so, we go back to 2005. You'll see those represented with your smaller version of the map in a, in a different color, but also represented over here larger, where you could see whether there was a renovation, a classroom addition, or both. You also have included in your packet the six-year capital master plan that you approved back on January the 10th. This six-year capital master plan shows projected out over the next six years, the needs of the school district. This does not show any facility that has a condition score of 90 or above. The concept is that a new school would have a condition score of 100. So, any school that has a condition score of 90 or above will not appear on this list. Again, just as a reminder, if you look at this list, if you look over on the far left where it says "school renovations, additions, new buildings," you have the name of the facility and the location, but you also have a description of what's being requested, whether it's a renovation or a classroom addition. If it's a renovation, you have the condition score, which is the first number. Then if, you also have the model utilization and program utilization percentages, which mainly refer to how much the building is utilized, whether it's overcapacity, undercapacity, et cetera. The model utilization representing, if all things remain the same, this is the number of students that a school could hold, this is the percentage of capacity it would be. But knowing that schools have different needs as they even change from year to year, where additional exceptional education classes may be assigned to a school, those classes have a lower pupil teacher ratio, and so therefore, the model, the, the program utilization would actually be a little lower than the model utilization. So, if we concentrate in column one, where it says fiscal year 2012-13, this is the request that the board approved back in, in last month regarding the projects for, the projects for, to be funded for next year. And I'm going to try to move this, the slides through, because I know you won't be able to see it on the screen, to this document, which is the next document, which shows only those projects that are approved in the first-year cycle, in the first-year request. You've got the school renovations, additions, and new buildings, and, and not necessarily going to read those for you. And then, they total around $135 million. They also include four high school renovations, which are all expensive, over $20 million on average. And then the bottom portion of the page shows the district-wide projects, which total about $50 million, which cover things such as technology, school bus replacement, and deferred maintenance for our existing facilities. The last item that you have, last few items that you have in your packet, the first one is some information regarding some property that is available at the Julia Green site, where we are struggling with the campus size, struggling to put a classroom addition at that facility because of the campus size, struggling there because of when cars pick up students, they go up and down the street and all around. So, we've got two parcels of property that are available that are not included in the current capital budget, that we may be coming back to you and asking for you to get those into the mix so that we can actually consider purchasing that property right there, adjacent to the school property at Julia Green. And then the last item in your packet is just a more detailed account of all of the facilities that have been renovated, or classrooms have been added to those facilities over the last five capital funding cycles, which, again, since there was no capital funding received in 2011 and no capital funding received in 2008, goes back to 2005. So, you can see all of those projects that, that have been funded and have been completed. I will say that, as Dr. Register mentioned, we will be opening the new Kane Ridge Elementary School this year. We also will be concluding the projects at Litten Middle School, which is a renovation project, as well as a small addition. The project at Gateway Elementary, which is a renovation project with an addition, and the project at Chadwell Elementary, which is a renovation project with a slight addition. The Hermitage renovation was completed over the semester break. They're finalizing, continuing to finalize that. And so, those are the projects that will be completed at the beginning of this current school year. So, with all of that serving as background, Dr. Register, I'll turn it over to you, or to, I was going to refer it to Mr. Kendall, who's the Chair of the Capital Needs Committee. But regarding the, I guess, the conversation and discussion relating to the 2012 capital request, if we wanted to look at, at that into more detail? Does that make sense?
Mr. Kendall's nod there.
Right. Does that make sense to, to go that route?
Where did he go?
Why don't we then just look at the one-pager that I've got up on the screen that you have that would just be for, that would just be for 2012? And you can refer also to the six-year capital master plan if you wanted to look at condition scores and any other years where funding is being requested as well. The first item on the list is Antioch Middle School. The request is for that facility to be renovated. It has a low condition score of 59.2, and the projected cost is a little over $11 million. And you can also find that, if you can see pretty well, on the map that you have, the copy of the map. The next item is Norman Binkley Elementary, which is a 10-classroom addition as well as a renovation. It has a projected cost of approximately $6.5 million. It has a condition score of 65.0. It's at 135% capacity, 135% utilization. John Early Museum Magnet, the proposal is a 12-classroom addition at a cost of just under $3.7 million. This is where the fifth grade will be added back to the middle schools in the Pearl Cone Cluster. And so, with that, as well as the continued interest in the museum magnet through the application process, there's a need for a 12-classroom addition. Julia Green, there is a proposal for a 12-classroom addition, as well as what I've just previously mentioned, increasing the property size by purchasing two parcels of land. We don't have that cost here. We do have the cost of the 12-classroom addition at approximately $2.8 million. And if you look at the six-year capital master plan, you'll see that it currently is at 117% utilization. But the projections from the student assignment office are that this school will continue to grow fairly rapidly and will be severely overcrowded in the next couple of years, if a classroom addition is not, is not included. The next project is Jolton Middle School, renovation, just under $7 million. This is the old Jolton High School building. The condition score for Jolton Middle is 63.7. The next project is AZ Kelly Elementary, a 10-classroom addition to replace portables and also for projected growth, approximately $2.6 million. AZ Kelly is in need of additional classrooms based on student projections. The next project, JT Moore Middle, a eight classroom, an eight classroom addition to handle student growth as well as current portables. The next one is a proposal to purchase land for a new elementary and middle school in the Antioch Cluster. Two parcels have been identified. We would like to go ahead for $1.1 million and be able to purchase the land in advance so that when we present the next capital budget, hopefully, a new elementary in the Antioch Cluster would be funded, and then the next year, a new middle school in the Antioch Cluster would be funded. But we would already have the land, and we could move much, much more quickly. The next project is Oliver Middle School, a 12-classroom addition. Again, this is overcapacity. It's currently, currently has portables, and is projected for, to have additional student growth. It's currently at 120% utilization. The next project is Rose Park Middle, a renovation project at about $8.5 million. Rose Park has a condition score of 61.8. The next five projects are four high schools that have a sep, they're separate, in the six-year capital master plan, a separate section for them. The first is Hillsborough High School renovation at a projected cost of $23.7 million. Hillsborough has a condition score of 71.1. The next is Hillwood High, renovation, $17 million proposed cost with a condition score of 69.9. The next two are Hume-Fog. The first is the gymnasium addition and land acquisition. Hume-Fog currently does not have a gymnasium where their teams can play. That's a projected cost of $7.9 million. And then to renovate the Hume-Fog facility, a cost of $16.8 million. Hume-Fog's condition score is 60.7. And then the last is a Stratford, Stratford High School renovation, has a condition score of 64.5, at a projected cost of $20.1 million. Then at the bottom of the page, our district-wide projects, ADA compliance. This is where we continue to try to make all of our schools ADA compliant. We do have a cluster pattern, a feeder pattern, not cluster, a feeder pattern, where all of our students can attend an ADA-compliant school, and all the way from kindergarten, pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, all of our high schools and middle schools are ADA-compliant. This is to continue to make all of our elementary schools compliant, as well as when any accommodations are requested. Through our stimulus funding, we were able to air-condition several of our high schools. If you look at the packet that shows previous, prior-year funding, there were, there were five high schools we were able to air-condition the gymnasiums, which, of course, leaves some without air conditioning. We want to do, we'd like to do the rest of those at an approximate cost of $2 million. We'd like to spend $2 million on replacing boilers, cooling towers, and chillers at various schools. $11.3 million on school bus replacements. School buses have a life of 12 years. Waiver can be requested to take those up to 15 years, but when they become 15 years old, school buses can no longer be used. We received $5 million back in 2010 for school bus replacements, even though we had requested more. So, this is to get back on the cycle of replacing school buses as needed. Again, the $11.3 million cost. The next item, $330,000. We have attempted to go through and look at all of our schools that don't have the security entry vestibules, where visitors are required to, to enter into the office and sign in before they can have access to the rest of the school, where it has that airlock. And so, we've done a number of schools. We would like to continue to do more. Stadium lighting, we still have some high schools that are in serious need of football stadium lighting replacement. We were able to, to do- We were able to do Hillsborough and Hunter's Lane and Glynn Cliff this past year. Actually, it wasn't Glynn Cliff, it was Overton. Well, that was the first year. We've done a number of these, but we still have particularly Stratford and Hillwood as the next in line to replace old football stadium lighting. Middle school athletic fields, we continue to try to upgrade those over time to provide electricity and water and bleachers and things of that nature for all of our middle school athletic fields. Pre-K playgrounds, we continue to add pre-K classrooms. They really need a separate pre-K playground, separate from the regular playground that the elementary students use. $4 million for roof replacement and repair. Maintenance emergencies and furniture, $4 million. Technology, the request is $22.5 million. Vehicle replacement, which we've not had in a number of years. We've got a lot of vehicles, particularly maintenance vehicles, that have well over 100,000, well over 100,000 miles that some do need replacement. And then video for buses at $360,000 brings the district-wide total to around $50 million. You can see the total request for the first year, $184.5 million. And I will open it up for any questions that you may have or discussion regarding, really regarding prioritization, I think, of these projects. If we are not to, if we did not receive $184.4 million in capital funding for this year, then we do need to prioritize our needs. And so I think that's one of the main, one of the main reasons we wanted to get together and have this discussion now, tonight.
All right. We will begin with Dr. Gentry.
Hi. So my first question was really exactly that, about prioritization. And I guess in one year, I still have the report from the chamber and what's shared regarding our low SES students. I know we have lots of other schools that, you know, even though condition scores, however those are determined, may not be at their highest, but they're still in environments that need a lot of attention. And the one that continues to come to my mind is Border Elementary. And you and I have had conversations about this. I know Dr. Rush and I have had conversations about that. And I know that there's been a visit to the school and some things within the limits of budget and time have been addressed. So I don't know that that's, I think that's more of a committee question, just to see what other factors other than the pure science, you know, when does the art of creating the appropriate environment for some of our most struggling students become a factor? I think that's just a question that, again, we may not be able to address here. It's not really the scope of what we're trying to accomplish. But I think at some point in time, we need to have a discussion that when, you know, there's got to be a good balance between the art and science of improving the environments for our students. So with regards to this sorting, so I'm assuming that the condition code versus the capacity is what really is your sort order when it comes to priority? Is that true?
Well, actually, the condition scoring is fairly objective. It's, and I'll let Joe tell you how that's calculated and some of the history and background behind that. So it's fairly objective, even though you can see some of the scores are really close to each other. And so there can be some subjectivity in determining what makes the list and what doesn't when they're only one or two points apart. What we've tried to do is to have a balance between bringing schools up that have a low condition score through renovation and also providing seats for students that are not in portables, not in portable classrooms. And so we've tried to really err on the side of providing permanent seating for students to add classrooms at buildings that have a lot of portables as opposed to the renovations because we think it's important for one thing, but secondly, renovations are really expensive. And so we try to make the money go as far as you can. But I do agree with what you're saying regarding, you can't just necessarily look only at the objectively calculated condition score. There are some other things that can come into play as well. Let me, if I could, ask Joe to provide a little information about how we came up with the condition scores back from its origination point through MGT of America up through how we do it today and what goes into that score.
And in that explanation, my other part, if I may, would just be, I look at the fact that these are six-year projections. And so is there a revisit of that condition score on an annual basis? Is it possible for that to shift in priority? Because a lot can happen in this five years.
Sure. Okay. In, I think it was 2003, I wrote an RFP asking for a company that had some sort of objective measuring tool to measure the condition of buildings rather than just have all of us objectively say, oh, things in my district are worse, or this one's worse, or who, opinions, you know? So I said, I wanted a program that had that. There are those out there. MGT of America, the company that had done some little work for us before, but they had a proposal and they have a program called Basis. And what it does, it looks at about 30-something major components of the building from HVAC systems broken down into several components, electrical broken down into several components, plumbing, finishes on the building, all the components of buildings. They look at the condition of those. They have a database that tells you, for example, your HVAC system ought to be worth a certain percentage of the cost of a building. And then you rate, is it 50% of that need to be replaced or whatever? So you have to rate all of these. And they came in and scored all of our buildings. That gives it a condition of the building. And so if they're taking off, if HVAC, for example, is worth 12% of your cost of your building, you say 50% of that needs to be replaced, well, 6% of that then is subtracted from 100 point of building to have, you're down to 94. You do that for all of 30-some components, you'll get a score of a building. If a building has a score of 70, the equivalent of 30% of that building needs to be replaced. That's the condition portion of it. It also has a component that looks at suitability. And it doesn't look as detailed as, like you say, as students are there. It does look at things like, does it have sufficient space and library space, have sufficient office space, some of the major components of it. It looks at those kinds of things. So that adds into the score also, and the site conditions also. It looks at those kinds of things to give you a total combined score that's listed here. Then we took that score and, you know, tried to put them in order so that you'll look, in most cases, the scores, the buildings with the lowest scores in the first year, divide them across that way. When we did this in 93, I explained to the board, then you really need to do this at least every three to five years, redo it, you know? And the reason being is because the first year we did it, we had scores, and the first couple of years, I noticed we were in a program of adding PE rooms to all of our elementary schools. We were adding a few a year. And then I would have to go back in personally and say, all right, that had a score of 82 before, but it had some points counted off because it didn't have a PE room. We added one. Let me put that back in there. And I have to go back and hand calculate all those. And when you're doing a lot of boiler replacements and PE rooms and all those things, you know, yeah, have I caught everything? Did I catch all of them? So you need a new baseline every so often. And so we did it again in 2008. I went to MGT. MGT trained our staff, Ken staff, it was Arnold's then, staff, how to do this. They came in and spent a couple of weeks training us. We went out, tried schools several times, and where we got to all looking at the same, redid it again. They've just been completed again this last November. So these are current ones. It's the second time we've redone those scores. But that's how we came up with the scoring system. That's how we, we try to give an objective way of determining just on physical condition and basic utilization of if it has the right spaces or not.
I would love to see MMPS continue this tradition we started of being very innovative in what we do for our students and see how we can marry that objective evaluation with some sort of a qualitative assessment and review to sort of broaden the scope. Because right now, it's a, it's an assessment that really takes into consideration a physical environment and not the consideration of who we're trying to serve. So I would just, don't like.
Dr. Brandon?
Yes. My question was the location of the land that you mentioned is up for sale and that you're interested in.
Right. If you look on the map, it's right here. And if you look at your copy, you'll see, you'll see that identified as the new elementary and middle land.
Streets, names. It's over there.
We don't want to get them too much.
It's right there.
No, no, no.
Next to the water.
Probably somewhere.
It's on Smith Springs Road, just south of Anderson.
Oh, okay. No, exactly. And I'm glad to see Antioch Middle is, has top priority, even though it's not in my district, but it really does need some renovations. So I'm glad to see they're on the list.
Yeah, it's on the list. This list?
Quick questions, actually. Well, quick questions for the top half of this, the school renovations and additions. Is there a detailed listing of what the renovations are? And I'm especially interested in Antioch Middle and all of these that are in the double-digit millions of dollars. I'm really interested in knowing what the specific renovations are. Is there a list right now that's?
No, there's not a list. That budget number was determined, just like I said, if the score got a 70. Because the 70 is because certain components that were scored needed replacement or repair or partial replacement. So it got it down to a score. That gave me a number of 30, equivalent of 30% of the building need to be replaced. So then I, based on, if I replaced 30% of the building, that's what the cost would be, and then add all the soft costs on it. That's how the budget came by. When we get to the point of actually selecting a designer and doing this, we go back and look at what that report said. It said you need to replace the air conditioning system, you need to replace the boiler, you need to replace the windows, you need to replace, and that's how the scope is determined, really from what that condition score said. That's what the renovations are. As well, and a lot of it's finishes also, it's finishes and systems.
Okay. So based on the budget approval, then you take what's been approved and you go back and say what is going to be the most cost-effective item to replace or renovate?
While responding to those things and the condition score that said they were bad, yes. And sometimes we would sit down with the principal, we established a planning team with the principal oftentimes.
That's what I was hoping you were going to say.
And every project, we have a planning team. And we asked the principal to be the leader of that planning team, say, would you select eight, 10 people that could be your faculty, it could be parents, you know, other people invested in that school? And we would sit down with someone, Ken staff, and the architect we select, say, here's what we have, budget we have. Here's where it came from, replacing these things. Now, we also need to look at, is there something else that we didn't see that you see? Because we have this much money, maybe something you see is more important to you and we maybe trade off on some things. And there are times when, by the time we get the money and get it, you know?
Things change dramatically.
Some things change a little bit because, for example, a boiler may have gone bad and it was, had a score, made the score go down. We had to replace that boiler on emergency through the maintenance department before. So we use that money for something else. So we do sit down with the principal and a planning team every time.
I agree with Dr. Brandon. I'm extremely delighted that Antioch Middle is on the top of this list and hope that we get this approved. A couple of other questions, if you don't mind. The bus replacements for this, if this budget is approved, how many buses are we looking at being replaced by this $11.3 million? I'm making you dig, Joe. I know, I'm sorry.
While Joe looks that up, I just want to, just to, not to burst anybody's bubble or, it's a quick clarification. The only reason that Antioch Middle's at the top of the list is because it's sorted in alphabetical order.
No, no. It's at the top of the list because it's a priority. It is priority.
We were kind of hoping you'd say that.
Let me have my moment, Chris.
We were hoping you'd say that. I'll go to the, go back.
Yeah. Let's just, let me have this for just like 10 more minutes and then I'll let you have it. I'm glad to see Antioch Middle on the list. There we go. The bus replacements and the videos for the buses, I'm interested in how many buses that would cover as well, if you can find that information. And regarding?
And a ballpark figure, what, approximately, how much does a bus cost? One bus?
They're about $70,000, $80,000.
Okay.
Joe, we're required by state law to replace them every, how often?
12 years. And you did some exceptions, and then we've used most of those exceptions since we haven't used them.
So we got a lot of old buses.
So do you know how many in our fleet right now are at that 15, 12 to 15-year? I'm just kind of interested to know if we have the funds to replace X number of buses, how many do we still have that we do need to replace? Because, you know, every time I see a bus rolling down, I'm thinking there go 40 to 80 children that are traveling on something that may or may not be safe. So I'm just kind of curious to know how many buses we have that we can replace versus how many? Yeah, they're all safe, every one of them.
They're all safe.
Every one of them are safe, but if they're close to being replaced.
Probably, we can, what we ought to do is get transportation people to give you an answer for that. We can send that to you.
That could be replaced?
125 buses.
That could be replaced with this? Okay.
And I will say regarding the video, what that is, is we've got a number of buses that need replacement of their video systems. They have the old systems, it's not the digital systems. And so we can also provide the number of buses that would be affected by the $360,000 here.
Okay. And one last question regards, regarding the pre-K playgrounds. Would that funding cover all pre-K programs or just a specific number? How many?
Just a specific number. They cost $25,000 to $30,000 apiece for a playground.
Okay.
From, great, the buses are, for an 84-passenger bus, is about $90,000. For a 76-passenger bus is about $82.5. And for a 42-passenger with a lift, special ed bus is about $98,000.
And that could easily add up to $11 million.
It does.
Well, we sell our old buses, right?
Yes.
Do you know how much we get for those?
Mr. Kendall, I have someone before you.
Okay.
I just want to, one last question regarding the pre-K.
How are we determining if, in fact, no, when we get these funds, how do we determine which pre-K programs are going to get these playgrounds?
Well, we work with the ones, we have some that have been there for a good while, you know, kind of a priority list. You've been on the list the longest, really.
Okay.
And also, we look at the number of children that are impacted. You have a large number. We also have to look, occasionally you will have approached by a principal or people in exceptional ed that say, you know, I need something here because we have a child with a condition that runs off or something. So we have to get the fence and get some equipment in there real quick. So we look at some special conditions, but it's usually how long they've been without.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Nolan, and then Mr. Kendall.
I have several things. First of all, we sell our old buses, right?
Correct.
Right, right. How much do we get?
And our buses are regularly maintained and?
Correct.
And kept in good working order, right?
Have to be inspected every year.
Okay. Right. Okay. And the process on the capital budget, this is different or separate from the operating budget that we are starting the process on the operating budget as well?
It is separate. The charter requires every department to submit a operating budget and it to be approved by a certain date, you know, submitted to the mayor, the mayor to the council by certain dates. We have to submit an operating budget, but there is no requirement for there to be an operating budget. I mean, excuse me, a capital budget. There's no, so there's separate items, actually. They're usually tracked close to the same timeframe, but there's not the requirement to fund the capital, that there is a requirement to fund the operating.
One thing, one thing I've noticed over the years is that, you know, things on the list seem to get pushed forward, pushed forward, either we don't get the funding or, or sometimes we do piecemeal things. Part of what makes a high score or a low score, I guess, is it needs a roof. We replace the roof, that changes its score a little bit. It still needs major renovations, but it gets pushed down the line. And at some point, there's a point of diminished return on pushing it down the line. And I, it seems to me sometimes that is not the most efficient way to do it. And so I want to be sure there are some things that are, that need some renovations that are a couple of years down the line on our schedule that are in need of major renovations. For example, and we talk about it all the time, Goodlessville Middle School. Goodlessville Middle School scores 61.4. And, I mean, we can go and, I don't know, fix one hole in the roof and it might move the score a little bit, but that school's in need of major renovations. And pushing it down the line is, we're getting to the point where we can't push it down the line much more. And there are a couple of schools that are, that seem to miss our priorities because they, because of the type of school. For example, Baxter ALC is an alternative school that has as low a score of any school that, on the list, that actually has students in it. And there is no, on the whole six-year plan, there's, I don't think there's a plan for any renovations to that. And that is, that's something that I think we need to address soon. I know it's not in this year's, we didn't include it in this year's budget, but that's something that, that we need to fix. If I could address those two. The first, Goodlessville Middle, what Joe has tried to do is to, so many of these projects could fit in first year. And he's tried to move some of them to second year or third year to at least balance out a little bit the requests. Goodlessville Middle.
Goodlessville Middle, actually, the determination was made to replace Goodlessville Middle rather than renovate, as a proposal, which increased significantly the cost of the project. And so he made the, we made the determination to move it out of first year because of the cost. Not that the capital needs committee or the board couldn't move it back into first year through the prioritization process, but that was the reason that it was moved back a little bit, was because instead of a renovation, the proposal was going to be a new Goodlessville Middle School. Regarding Baxter, as you say, it's not being addressed here, has a very low score. We're looking at some alternatives relating to that particular program, particularly as it might relate to location. We're not ready to announce anything, we don't have any firm plans yet. So that's the reason that it's not showing up right now, is because we're looking at maybe some alternative locations for that program.
Also, also Merle is a couple of years down the road. And I want to be sure we keep that as a priority too and it doesn't get pushed down. So my last, my last question is, we're adding a lot of classrooms and we need two each year. And is there, at what point do we say, okay, that is, that's enough classrooms for an elementary school or a middle school, we need to build a new school, building? How does that process work in determining that? Is there a specific formula we use or is that something that's subjective and depending on the location?
I think it's both. I think first you've got to look at the site and see what the size of the site is in relation to how much school can be, can go to that particular site. We typically try to stay, typically, within an 800 maximum size for an elementary school, for instance. Obviously, you can see that we've, we're requesting to purchase land in the Antioch Cluster to build a new school rather than to continue to add on to, add classrooms to some of the existing schools in that cluster. But, you know, there becomes a question of how large should an elementary school be? And then also, where is the growth occurring? Would it make more sense for a new school to be built closer to where the growth is occurring rather than to add classrooms on to an existing facility? And I'll let Joe follow up on that, on that response.
That's correct. It looks at a couple of things. We do look at the size, what size population will a site handle comfortably? You know, from students driving, being delivered to the school, from the number of teachers that have to be parked on place, from the playground space that you have on the site, how old is the school itself, you know? What are you adding to, what kind of the condition is you're adding to? At some point, it is just more feasible, depending on the growth, to add another school that is more out toward the growth area. You know, we've done that at any number of places. And it has happened most often in the southeast part of the county.
Mr. Kendall?
I have a couple of questions. One, one deals with, I know back in the 90s, I guess it was, Rettison administration, the portables was a big, big issue in the community, primarily aesthetics, you know, portable surrounding schools. How are we doing with that and how does that fit into this capital approval?
We had a maximum, actually, in the late 90s of 591 portables. We have in the neighborhood of 350, 355 now. So as we have added on to schools, we have tried to sell those, you know. Out of those 350-something, we probably are using somewhere between 200 and 225 for actual classroom spaces. They're used for a lot of things other than that. They may be used for a PE storage for outdoor, for the gym teacher to use, things they're using outside. May be used for a PTO, you know, may be used for a community room, can be used for several things, you know. So not all of that 355 we've used for classrooms. So when we don't, when we look each year at the, at the end of the year, how many requests have we got for portables? You know, from, we really need legitimate requests for students and growth and school, then we look, see how many do we have vacant or under, not utilized? And after we move those, if we see we have a good number of them that these are still, we've got excess, then we sell them.
Yeah, basically, there were two issues. One was the, I know we had one school that had 17 portables around it at one time. It might have been Lakeview, I can't remember.
Actually, we had one across, I live about a block from Granbury, had 25 at that minute.
25 around the school. So the aesthetics was a real, real issue, but also, the portable was original portable, and I don't know if we've changed that, did not have restroom facilities.
They still don't. And what we did in that case, in Granbury and one other location, we took a portable and divided, made, and made a restroom portable out of it, divided it down half and put entry in both sides of it and had a male and female side of it. We did that in two different locations when we had so many portables. It makes it difficult because they're not very portable then, because you're having to hook them up to water, you're having to hook them up to sewer and keep it freezing, oh, they're not as portable then, you know, so...
Yeah, but in inclement weather, makes it very difficult for kids and teachers.
But even then, they had to go out of the portable, outside to go to the portal building.
Right.
But the school building itself didn't have enough facility for the number of students and you need more restrooms.
Sure.
And probably cafeteria space.
We have very few of our mobile units that have covered walkways, so kids will get wet when they go outside.
But the trend is, I guess, that we are reducing them?
Correct. We continue to reduce them.
Right.
Even while we're growing in numbers of students, even while we're growing in student enrollment, we're able to continue to reduce numbers of portables. And all of our portables, as well as school buses, as well as anything else that's declared surplus, all of that's sold through the metro government EBIT system. And so, just in case you wanted to know how we sell them, that's how, that's how it's done and the proceeds come back to the school district.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Simmons?
To expand a little bit on Mr. Norris's comment regarding new school versus adding classroom, the addition that you've listed on our, excuse me, on our sheet, it'll say 16 classrooms or 12 classrooms. How, how far in advance is that looking? Is it looking for the, at the immediate needs or is it looking for five years in the future or the additions?
It depends upon the location. Well, actually, it doesn't. We look down the road, we work with the student assignment office in looking at student projections. When I said that it depends on the location, some of the areas, there's not projected growth, and so what we're trying to do is just get rid of school, just get rid of portables and to have permanent classrooms. Some of the requests that are on here are related to projected student growth, not necessarily overcrowding as it exists today, but projected overcrowding that we see in the next five years or so. And so while you may look at the six-year capital master plan and see a school where we're requesting additional classrooms, but yet it doesn't appear to be overcrowded or very much overcrowded at the present, the reason that those additional classrooms are being requested is because of projected growth, projected student growth. So we're taking that into consideration, not just where they, where they are today.
Right. Well, I would just hope that, that projected growth does take, is take, is a factor that is taken into account, because you would have to, you would hate to build 12 classrooms when in two years you might need 15. So that was one concern. And the other comment I have was sort of a follow-up to Dr. Gentry's comments about the science versus the art of the learning environment. And what has driven me to this conclusion specifically tonight was the panel that was here first. And what I took away from that is that we should ask for what we need for a good learning environment, not what we need to minimally to what we think we're not going to get. Although the city may be facing some tough economic times, what do we really need? Now, you know, this would apply to both capital needs and operational budget. So my question would be, is our request in line with trying to increase sort of the learning environment, not just maintain what the programs we have? Does that, does that make sense?
It does. And yes, I think the renovations do address the learning environment, because they look at conditions of buildings that will, whether it's the, the conditions of the environment, the indoor air quality, the lighting, all those things, so, and the types of spaces that you need to have to learn. So it helps and it improves the learning environment in that sense. One thing Dr. Gentry was asking about is to look at the students that use the building, look at it in another way, and the students that use the building and, you know, the audience that it serves, you know. And so it's, they're two little bit different things, but yes, the spaces end up being good learning environments for whoever's there. But how you prioritize it, the way you look at prioritizing is one thing she was asking about.
Well, I know that Hume Fog, when my daughter was there in 1998, she graduated in 98, I know a priority at that time was a new, was a gym, because they didn't have a gym. And I know that the priority is not also today, a new gym, a gym. So that's been 14 years, that it's been on a high priority list and nothing's happened. Now, I know it's a huge expense and there are, there are a lot of other expenses, but my argument would be that we ask for what we need, not what we think we can get.
Mr. Cent, I'm Mr. Hayes.
Thank you. I still consider myself relatively a new board member and even though I've...
You can't claim that anymore.
I've been here, well, I haven't been through, I look at the capital, approved capital funding and I haven't been through a cycle, because the last time we received capital was before my tenure commenced. So I, you know, forgive me if this is rehashing some of the folks who've been here a little longer.
Hopefully, we'll get it before you leave.
That's fine. I'm trying to get my hands a little bit better around timelines. And I think we all hear from our constituents questions and concerns relative to renovations, new schools, additions. And I, you know, I look at Antioch Middle as an example, if we take the first on the list. And the top line says year in which cash disbursement is required, well, that could be anytime, this year in '12 or '13. I'm assuming it's the, it's the fiscal year, July 1st. So theoretically, some sort of bond debt could be put out there sometime in the next few months and it gets funded and it comes in. And then we go through a, a planning process with the principal and then we engage an architect. And so in a, in a best-case scenario, you get, you get money in, call it September 1st, if that's the year, September 1st of '12. And you go through a couple of month process with community members and it's the eight to 10 people you talked about with the principal. And maybe spend three months doing that, another three months designing a project, which might be kind of fast, and then another 30 to 45 days permitting it.
I'll give you a timeline.
Yes, please.
What generally, the, when the mayor proposes a spending plan and the council approves it, when they approve it, then we can start taking action. We have usually selected a designer by then. We know it's going, if it's imminent, we know we'll bring a designer, we recommend this designer. So we have a designer on board then. But that is usually anywhere, it's been as early as March or April. It's usually more like July to August when the money becomes available. It's been as late as October, but it's been, normally they've tried to follow close to the pattern of the operating budget. So it's usually, we've probably more around July, we've gotten approval from the, from the council. At that point, we can start spending money. They haven't sold the bonds, the finance department determines when they're going to sell the bonds, you know. But, but we've got the authority to go, so we engage the architect. The architect, we've already asked the principal to form a planning team. We start meeting with them.
Can I, can just, I want to go back to the July to August. Are we aware that there's anything in the works that could give us capital funding this July or August of any amount?
We won't know it.
And historically, we would have, we would hear that...
Historically, we would hear probably...
Around now, that they're working on a package.
Usually a little later than that. It's usually around April we hear.
We hear that they're working on a package.
That the mayor's looking at a package to propose to the council. It's usually in the, in the spring, usually. And then it'll go to the council. The last number we've had, it's been approved as the mayor's recommended, you know. Usually I have met quite a bit with the metro finance director and know kind of what to expect. And bring to this board and the capital needs committee saying, hey, we're not going to get $80 million, we're going to get 40, you know, and here's what a priority we work out and comes to the board for approval, you know. But then, once that's been done, it takes the, the architect is meeting, of course, with the planning team to produce, all the meetings that are done with the community, to produce the construction documents, to go through the bidding, to go through the approval process and bidding process and all. It's usually the next spring to summer before we bid it. So you're, you're killing almost a year, not quite a year, you know, in the, on the planning and all, before you can actually start construction, usually starting construction the following year, you know, like the following spring, summer.
And I get back to, if we're funded for Antioch Middle, close to Ms. Mays or Julia Green, certainly close to me, likely completion, if we had full funding in the July to August timeframe, is really 24 months.
Close. If you have an addition, it could be a little bit less, because elementary school is going to cost you, take you from 12 to 15 months to build, you know. If you have an addition of 10, eight, 10, 12 classrooms, it could take eight, 10, something like that. A renovation, complete renovation will probably take a year's time, you know, maybe even longer, because if you have to keep the students in the building, you have to do some shifting around and it makes, it takes a little longer.
So it's a, it would open, huh, in the best case, it opens in '14, '15?
Correct.
And then, and that's if we keep, if we go on a fast track and keep the students in the building, '14, '15. So I look at, I look at, and I don't, I don't have Antioch's numbers, I look at Green's numbers and we're, I mean, you know, it's a lot of people. I don't, I don't, you know, it depends on how you look at it, it could be 750, it could be, you know, I think you had 750, Chris, in 16, 17, in one model and upwards of 800 in another. And I've seen fewer in other models. I know those are all subject to change. So do we theoretically...
Yeah, the five-year projections that we prepared for Julia Green showed 750 for year 2016, '17.
Yeah. So where are we in the, in the '14, '15 year when this could open for Green, as an example?
I don't have a projected enrollment exactly for that year, but if we were to take the...
Average growth?
Yeah.
Year it's 6, 650-ish, plus or minus, on a program capacity of, so you have 100, 150 kids.
You know, somewhere in the range of 650, 700.
So where do they go? Where do we put them? Right? We've got a program capacity of 495 between, and, I mean, I'm not saying this is just at Green, but at, at any school that is over 115% capacity that has land constraints. If we really do see the growth, and I don't know that we will or, or won't, you know, that's the question I'm getting from parents at Green and Priest.
Well, let me just be specific about the enrollment projections, because last Friday, this past Friday, we released our first set of preliminary projections. So this is the first set for next year. We project the enrollment at Julia Green to go up by about 35 students. Okay? Now, what you have to do is you have to think probably specifically about each site and each school and the growth that takes place each year and take it a year at a time. You know, it's not possible for me to say hypothetically what would happen at Julia Green several years down the road. And then, so we're, we're right now planning for next year at Julie Green. We're speaking to the principal, right, the portables, you know, how many portables are there, how many are being used, what are the plans? While I say that Julie Green's projected to increase by 35 students, that number might change some, but that number also, we have not yet attached staffing to that, which really you have to look at, is projected staffing increases, so how many teachers are that? And so there's just a lot of different planning that has to go in.
Is it relates to, this could be Green or any, any school cluster-wide, if we, if we miss an August fund date, if it pushes into October, November, December, you miss opening by, do we typically open schools in the middle of the year? Would you open a renovation?
We don't open a new school in the middle of the year, we open additions in the middle of the year, ultimately.
If we had to do that. How much planning have we done around another... How much planning have we done around another year of zero capital increase? Zero capital dollars, but we had none last year. I've got to think it's taking a toll on the maintenance budget. How much planning are we doing around zero?
We're not doing, haven't done specific, planning at specific locations, we have not.
Okay. That maybe starts to happen in a month or two, if you know, if the wind is blowing the wrong way.
If it's going the wrong direction and we're not getting capital, certainly start looking at it. Over the years, we look at, just using Green as an example, anything that's like that, any facility that's like that, we have had to, I guess, we have had a number of locations where, for example, we've had certain grades at a school be located somewhere else. We had, when I first came, we had a Gower, had, out near your direction, had, before the new Gower was built in 89, when that was built, before that, we had a Gower kindergarten building that was on Hicks Road, you know, it's, it's been sold since, it's a church, I think, now. But we had, where Mountview is right now, it, there was an old Mountview school right there that served as a kindergarten or some of the grades for Lakeview at the time, so we have to look at situations like that, what facilities do we have that could be used, if we could move certain grades or something at the school, or split a campus somehow. So things, Dotson, had a Dotson kindergarten, it was Dotson, so we started looking at those things, what possibilities there are.
Have you begun, I mean, I look at this and see 180 million in capital, and I see that we essentially, we've changed some priorities a little bit, but it appears we've kind of combined the 11, 12, and 12, 13 that we'd approved a year ago together. 80%?
No, what we, no, I, we recently, what we did was reevaluate the buildings, they had new scores, so a few have changed a little bit. What's really changed the most in here is then I tried to keep it in order again according to the priority, the scores, but we put packages in for high schools.
Sure.
So you've got four high schools in year one. Some of those high schools, if you look at the actual scores, they're large facilities that need a lot of work, you know, and would impact a lot of students because they're high schools, but their score would indicate they would be in a later year down, they wouldn't be there, you know. You've got that happening, you've got that coupled with the fact that we didn't receive no funding last year at all, and the numbers went up somewhat. So you have a number of reasons, but we didn't really combine, follow kind of same pattern that I had before.
As we talk with our constituents, how, how important, how, you know, is it, how dire the straits, how important is it that we get a significant capital allocation this year?
I think since we didn't receive anything last year, we didn't receive anything in 2008, the year, in 2010, we received one building, you know. Now, we did some, receive some federal stimulus funds, but that went for more things like air conditioning and roofing and stuff like that. It's getting more critical, you know, we have needs of growth, and all the renovations, like Chris mentioned, what, what we have usually tried to opt for was adding seats as opposed to renovations, because although we have a lot of buildings that need renovations, we don't really have any real safety issues, we've just got old facilities, you know. And so I really opted for seats to put students, you know, rather than having such overcrowded situation, rather than renovations, if you had only enough money to do one of two things, what we've done. But it's getting critical where we need to do it.
We're not, we're not bumping into significant safety concerns, but it's, we've got leaky roofs and air conditioning issues.
And that's why, if you look at these district-wide things, it's important that we haven't received, we got roofing money through stimulus funds a couple of years ago, we didn't get any money last year. We need to replace, if you take the average life of a roof, which should be 20 years, and it's one way or the other, a few years, you know, and how much roofing costs per square, and how many squares roof we have, we should be replacing four or five million dollars worth of roof a year. You know, I'm asking for $40,000, and that includes repairs plus, plus replacements, and so, and we hadn't received that money in the last couple of years, so that's, we usually fund that separately, but so you're getting more and more of that, and then you're, you know, the HBC replacements, things like that, get older when you, you know, don't get money, you need money to replace those renovations, you replace most of them.
Perhaps a significant point, we did not receive funding this past year, but we typically, we receive some capital money each year. Joe, what have the amounts been running over the last three, four, or five years, in terms of what capital funding has been?
50 to 60 million dollars is what we were getting at first, in the 50 to 60 million dollar range, except like I say, 2011, we got nothing. 2010, we got like 25 million from Metro and normal capital funding, we had another 31 million in stimulus funds, you know.
So in my opinion, it's very critical because our, because our needs list keeps growing, they keep piling up, and 50 or 60 million gets us, we fall further behind.
We've got a, you know, when I looked at this two years ago, we were at about 80 million a year in needs over six years, and we were adding basically 30 million a year now, the last couple of years.
Mr. North.
I've sort of noticed that in the, in the process, usually in the budget process, the operating budget gets a lot of attention, we have all sorts of hearings, we talk about it, we talk about our need, the public goes to the council, they call the mayor's office, and they're real excited about it, and talk about it a lot. And we had a group, friends of Metro Schools here, and I suspect they're going to, they're going to work on that this budget season. But then, when it's time for the capital discussion, it just sort of happens. The mayor's office gets our list of things and decides what is the mayor's priority, and then submits it to the council, and then the council does what the mayor has suggested. That has typically been how it happens, and it sort of happens quietly, and we look and we got some, we didn't get others. It seems to me that we need to engage the principals, and the teachers, and the parents, and the communities, to be sure that the community, and the mayor, and the council understand the capital needs before that time comes. And whether those are, I know, I know one year, right after Mayor Dean became mayor, he was touring schools, and he toured the Madison School, that's now at Core House, but that building. And it was clear to him that major renovations were needed at that building, and it got done. And what, so, I say all that to say this, maybe we need to, to sponsor some tours for, for the mayor and for members of the council to, to show the needs, and how, and explain to them why it's a need, and how bad the need is, and let the principal show the trouble spots, and, and see if we can't make that, that push in the capital budget season like we do in the operating budget season. It just seems to me that that would be, that that's a good idea and might be effective.
Mr. Kendall.
Joe, in the, unfortunately, there've been many times when we were almost reactive, you know, to population growth and all, to follow up on what Kay was saying. How well do we work with the planning commissions and others to be able to be proactive in terms of determining needs? I mean, example, Jefferson Street around 5th and 6th and 7th Avenue, a lot of building going on, apartment complexes, I mean, you know, down in the gulch, you know, 11th and Charlotte, huge condominium kind, and I don't know if the people that are going to move in that got children or not, but obviously, some of them will. And do we plan around that? I mean, I'm thinking about a school like Buena Vista, which is located, we know, we know Germantown has grown substantially, now we've got a huge number of apartments that are being built right there on Jefferson Street.
We do look at that, and I'll let Chris Webber add more to it, but he, his, his staff, he and his staff have projections that they use certain criteria as to how many children, different types of households, you know, with an apartment or a single-family house or whatever, in different parts of the city will generate. They look at the number of building permits that are in Metro, they also work with Metro planning commissions to, so that they're on the same page there, and I'll let Chris tell you more about that process.
Well, one thing that Joe may have been referring to is that when property goes to be approved, they, they consider, and I'm not sure all the specific ins and outs of it, but we provide them with data for schools that are overcapacity overcrowded, and the student generation factors for multi-unit dwellings and single-family unit dwellings, and then depending on the number of homes or units, it might require land and things like that. Our department, we collaborate with the planning commission to provide the information so that they're capable of doing that. The other thing that our department does is we utilize property data in long-range projections. So we will look at trends in housing development, in single-family, multifamily developments, and we then correlate that with the number of students that have historically been generated from those types of units. To help better accurately project long-range projections, that information's also overlaid with actual student enrollment history data, so that's one of the factors that we use.
Gentlemen, I think we owe you a round of applause because the construction office is one of the key components in this school district. And with my history being in this district, I've seen planning, I mean, so much better than what it used to be. And back to your question, Ms. Mays, about principals working with the construction office, I can say I've lived in that office sometime when renovations were going on, and they do include even down to the architects coming to your schools and sitting down with you, so that has been in the works for quite some time. Capital needs, it's, it's not a secret, two years, we, you know, we haven't had really much activity there as far as funds are concerned. And I think we need to be, and I agree with Mr. North, we need to be aggressive and saying to the, to the public, the mayor's office, and the council, that yes, we need these funds, that we can't expect anything to happen if we don't see the need to move forward. And that's, that's definitely what we need with our school buildings. We're in and out of the school buildings all the time, just as you are, and we see the fixtures, the lockers coming from the wall, and some of the other things, and maintenance can only do so much to keep them going, and we applaud that department as well.
Madam Chair.
Because you do keep a lot of that, that going. And my philosophy is, if you build it, they will come. If we ask for it, I think we may not get all of it, but I think we can get pretty close to it.
Yeah, I know you've closed, well, you were closing now.
We haven't closed yet.
But I want, well, I want to throw out a little lobbying, I guess. You know, thinking about the Buena Vista situation, it is crowded, but we also have a concern about how we diversify that school. And I was looking at all those apartment complexes being built on Jefferson Street, all Germantown down there, that's some beautiful land right across from it, that's owned by the state, that overlooks the Capitol, it's on the south side of Jefferson Street. In my mind, that would make an ideal place to attract people from all parts of that community, but that's just something I want to throw out to think about.
Are you saying to develop that property?
Yes, to put a school there. I mean, you know, you're talking about a beautiful piece of property that I think would attract people from Germantown, would attract people from those apartment complexes, and also people that traditionally go to Napier, I mean, not Napier, Buena Vista. It's nothing wrong with, I mean, it's owned by the state, they might give it to us.
Well, you asked.
You want me to go down the bar?
That's his homework.
I don't know, if we're thinking about innovative ways to, to create diversity and that kind of thing, I think it's just an idea to think about.
Let's get us some money first, let's ask the mayor to give us some money.
Let's get Antioch Middle renovated first.
Well, look, look.
Top of the list, that's right.
Look, you know what they call it for the council members, let's don't get like that.
Well, Stratford, Stratford is at the bottom, so we'll get it. In a way, thank you so very much. Any other questions before we go into announcements? Hey, Dr. Register, did you have anything to say? Okay, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Say this over here.
Okay. Yeah, I got that top of my list. Dr. Gentry, do you have any announcements? Dr. Brannon?
No.
Just a reminder that the Youth Safety Summit meeting will be next Friday, the 9th, at 7:00 a.m. at the Martin Center.
Mr. North?
No announcements.
Mr. Kendall?
No.
Anyone else on that end? Okay, immediately following, I guess we, probably about 7:00, we'll go into our executive session, please make sure you're back here on time. Music Makes a Difference. This is a program within the metro system that probably none of us have had very much really business to do with this, but it is a program, it's a grant program, and I went to a meeting last week down at the Metro Arts Commission, and I ran into the gentleman that really hits this up, and it's the National Singers, who started a new program in 2011 to help to support music education in our schools and the community. The Music Make a Difference Grant Program is designed to provide financial assistance to school music programs serving at, at-risk youth. Also, increased access to funding, last year, this grant funding, funding was limited to Metro National Public School and schools in Davidson County, and 2012, this grant funding will be available to any school that's private independent charter music school program in middle Tennessee. So we need to really, really push our principals to get on this. Also, last year, they were able to fund $500 grants, this was due to our success in 2011. In 2012, we'll be offering more $500 grants. And again, this is the National Singers, so if you want to go to that website, it's nationalsongers.org, and the grants applications must be received by April 15, 2012. Educators of the Future also is a part of this, this is a college scholarship fund program the National Singer is offering. In other words, they're, they're taking students who are entering college, and I know that some of the courses are looking for scholarships for their students, they're seniors, so this is a great way for them to, to get, get some scholarship money. Again, those must be, must be in by April 30th. Tuesday, March 8th, Dr. Register will do the, I'm sorry, Thursday, March 8th, at 5:00 p.m., Dr. Register will give his annual State of Metro address at the Martin Professional Development Center. And Friday, March 9th, and Saturday, March 10th, the board retreat will be held at the Martin Professional Development Center. And we have a new committee, it's the naming of schools committee, I have, I've asked these individuals if they would serve on that committee, that's Dr. Joanne Brannon will be chair, Mark North and Kay Simmons will serve on that committee, and if any of you have any ideas, please pass them on to her. And our last announcement, this is Inglewood Spring Fling is this Friday night at March 2nd, 2012, at 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It is open to the entire district and features local artists, homemade cakes for the cakewalk, pony ride, fish fry, inflatables, and a silent auction with over 50 items. This annual event is special in that it continue to showcase the success that can take place when parents, community, and the district partner with our children. And this is coming from Erica Lanier, President of the Parent Pad Metro National Public Schools. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our work session. I'll move with your jury. Thank you.